Honorable Mayor Jeff Mason presiding.
Mr. Jimin, would you listen first?
Father, we thank you for the day, Lord, for the opportunity to come out and not to come conduct the county's business. We just pray, Lord, that you be with us as we do that. You know there's a way you want us to do it. We just pray, Lord, that we can find that way. We pray for those of our counties tonight for their sake. Lord, we have a special prayer tonight for our friends and saints. We just pray that you would be with them and his family, with all the ones that laid on him. We know you're still in the healing business. We just pray, Lord, that your will will be done, that you would hear our prayers tonight. We want this now as we go through this meeting, we would like your Christ to be with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I think United States of America, to the true religion which is sanctified, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite in its essence, and eternal.
Glenn Reese.
Here.
Terry Davis.
Here.
Shannon Green.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Here.
Jason Stewart. Jimmy Waitford.
Here.
Dalton Pascal.
Here.
Shannon Minchi. Erica Abel.
Here.
Tom Sheeney.
Here.
Tom Cowan.
Here.
Lena Nixon.
Here.
Eddie Stowe.
Here.
Bill Reese.
Here.
Tommy Banning.
Here.
Joey Nixon.
Here.
Danny Sackick.
Here.
Tim Miller.
Here.
David Gross. Frank Witter.
All right, before you, out of number five is the approval of the minutes, the August 10th, 2020 meeting, and the August 31st, 2020 meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I ask for motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Ron Sheeney, first, second, and Glenn Reese. All right, I have a motion and a second approval of minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll start with number six announcement, and I'm gonna let Ms. Vonico come up and talk to us just a little bit. She wants to beg us on Mr. Steve, so y'all remember Ms. Von in your prayers, and Steve as well.
I'm not used to this, but I just wanted to tell everybody that, first of all, I thank you for all the prayers, and all the calls, and text messages, and we've never felt so loved in our life. And he had the surgery, he had the accident Friday morning, and the surgery Saturday morning, and they repaired the C2, three discs, and, oh, C3 and C4, and C4 and C5. And he took a real bad leak trauma to his spinal cord. And suddenly was a bad day, and, but after I got him calmed down, he could feel every part of his body that I touched, and he can shrug his shoulders, and he can talk. And y'all see that in just a minute. And he's kind of weak voiced in what you're gonna say, but they had to do the surgery in his neck, and of course the swelling and all, and so on, but he's got a really good attitude now. And I went down there today, they moved him to a room, and they actually set him up in a chair, and I don't wanna know this, but he can actually use a urinal and a fake bag. So I think that's a blessing from above. And he's going to rehab, to wherever they suggest, and he's gonna give 110%, and he said, "I will be back at work." He may be in a wheelchair, and he knows that, but he's got the wheel, and if anybody can do it, I'm taking it. But he's got our whole family at the Highway Department, and there's nothing that none of them wouldn't do to keep the place rolling and keep things going, or do for him, and I appreciate everyone of y'all more than words can say. And I appreciate everybody's prayers, and I just ask to continue. Thank you.
Stacy's gonna play a video we got today. So that just shows he's determined to be back, and we know Steve, and he will be back. All right, next we have a presentation from Senator Mark O'Neal. You'd like to come up?
Now, I will tell you that something happened the first time since I've been in the legislature this morning, and it actually had to do with Steve. We have a prayer meeting that goes on Monday mornings, and we've been doing it for over 10 years, and a lot of legislators get together, but normally we're just praying for the governor, we're praying for legislators and such, and things that are state issues, but this morning, the whole state stopped, and we were praying for Steve. I will tell you what, he was in our hearts, he was in our prayers, and prayer works. We expect him to be back 100%. And I see that he's got so many of his folks that work with him here, that's just a testament that they're here supporting him, so we really, really appreciate that. All right, so I wanna kind of give you guys an update of what's going on in the state, and I've asked to come to you all twice per year, once when the legislations were done, and once when we come right back to go into session again. However, this year's been totally unusual, because when we ended, we ended like in April, then we came back, then we ended again, we ended up with a special session, then we ended, came back with another special session, so this year's been one that we've been coming back on a very regular basis to deal with so many of our crises that's going on in the state. But I wanna tell you how it affects your county. So many times we're fighting to say, "Please do not give unfunded mandates to the counties." Don't pass bills that say, "You all have to fund them." If we don't have the money, we don't need to pass it. It shouldn't be passed on. This is one year, though, that I'm gonna tell you that both the governor and the legislators have tried to come together to say, "We want to make sure that our counties have extra money." And we have passed over $200 million to be sent back to the counties and to the cities without strings attached. So I believe in, in this county, you're gonna be getting about $820,000 to be addressing these issues on however you need to. We've tried to make more grants available, we've tried to cut some strings, we've tried to cut some red tape, so a county can handle the business that they need to without unnecessarily state regulation or state mandates. We've got schools, even our Commissioner of Education. We've never handled anything like this before. We don't know necessarily what the next step is, but we're trusting that if we give the authority to the counties, that it's at this level, that you are gonna know what has to happen for your kids here, because what happens here is gonna be much different than what would happen in Memphis, Tennessee. So we're trying to give as much freedom and liberty and authority to the local counties. That means that you all have a whole lot more money and authority than you've ever had, and we're trying as a state to back you up that way. Now, I will tell you that we were expecting our state funds to go down substantially, and in Nashville, we've watched that. Nashville, Davidson County, they're really in serious financial problems. However, the state, we're kind of holding our own. We're not taking the dips that we thought we might, we're not getting any extra money, but the amount of money that we thought we would be losing, we're not losing quite as much as what we had anticipated. So we cut over a billion dollars out of our budget and still gave the counties extra money. When we go back in January, we wanna, we'll be able to reassess to see exactly how far we are. But at this point, what I wanna know is if there's anything that you all need me to be looking at in January, when we start back in session. We can't tell you what the COVID-19's gonna look like, we're not sure. We can tell you from the data, though, that this is a very serious, very serious illness for those in our vulnerable population. I'm gonna tell you that my wife actually falls in that population. She had some lung issues, she's over in her 60s, which means I've gotta keep her kind of isolated for the best I possibly can. But for the vast majority of the people that actually would get COVID, it's gonna be a very serious sickness, but it's not gonna be fatal. We'll see these numbers, they're coming in on a daily basis, we get them, weekly basis, we're trying to put the data together to see what it's gonna look like going forward. We believe that we actually had overreacted early in the year. We were told in March that 136,000 people were gonna die in 90 days in Tennessee. And if we put that perspective, in the entire state of Tennessee, every single year from all causes, we lose about 71,000 people. So we were being told that it's gonna be an additional 136,000 people were gonna die. And as a state, we made a lot of decisions based on that information. We had it from what we thought were the best scientists, the best medical information, and we made decisions based on that. In hindsight, we believe we've made some poor decisions, but if you're a Monday morning quarterback, it's easy to know what to do. We've only lost just over 2,000 people in the six months, not the 136,000 in 90 days. We would not have gone near as far as shutting things down, we wouldn't have made near the decisions we did. We just didn't know. And at that point, the governor was trying to make the best decisions he can to protect as many people as he possibly can. So it's beginning to open things back up, we're trying to do it in the wisest way we possibly can. But with that, Mayor, I'm here to answer any questions you all might have, or if there's things that you want me to be looking at in January, I'm here to take those as well.
Mark, one of the things that I hear daily, and you and I have already discussed it, is the fact that some of our elderly are not getting to see their family, and that's becoming an issue with a lot of things, and if there's anything that you can do to help with that, it would be greatly appreciated.
And especially referring to nursing homes, in nursing homes, this has been a very deadly disease. However, I'm getting a lot of individuals that are saying, "Hey, I had a loved one that actually died in a nursing home," and when we're actually doing things, we're finding that perhaps they had bed sores, or they had conditions that they weren't accustomed to, and they said, "We've not been able to go in and be with that loved one." We don't know what necessarily all the conditions are and so forth, so we've actually, last week, the end of last week, a lot of the legislators, such as myself, we sent a letter to the governor, asking the governor to start opening up those nursing homes for people that can come visit them in a responsible way. We just can't have people walking in and so forth, because this is a very vulnerable population. But we do believe that family members and such, them coming back in in a reasonable way is gonna be better for their mental health, their physical health, and so forth, so we have written that letter last week. But I tell you what, I've actually not gotten to be with many people, and I really appreciate y'all right here that I can actually be, and we can have this kind of interaction. You know, I do have to say that I see John Henry, you know, I thought it was interesting when I ran for state senate, and I had six counties. He comes back here, he's a resident of this county, he runs for senate in 95 counties. That guy could travel, but I do appreciate y'all sitting down and taking time to talk to me. If there is anything that you want me to consider, please let me know, because we wanna draft it early, we don't know how our session's gonna look, but whatever it is, we wanna make sure that we're running it early. I promise you, we're not gonna be putting unfunded mandates, I will not vote for those, on the county. I wanna make sure that you all have extra money, and we're not gonna be taking your money. I appreciate it. Mayor, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Thank you for the work you do for Smith County. All right, Ms. Mary Draper has a presentation she'd like to do tonight.
Good evening. I'm Mary Draper, and I'm the Family Consumer Science Extension agent here in Smith County. And tonight I've come to you to talk about SCE. In case you're not familiar with what SCE is, it stands for Family Community Education, and we have nine clubs here in Smith County. And I wanted to give an update on what our clubs have been doing through the pandemic, so I asked Ms. Phyllis McKinney, a board school of SCE, and she shared just a brief update.
Good evening. I have two projects that Mary wanted to share with you. One of them is for my club, which is the Born School Club. Last year, we applied for and received a grant from UCE MC Care's in the amount of $1,000, and it took about a three or four month process to do it. We didn't get it the first time, and they encouraged us to apply again, so we did, and the second time we were successful in getting the grant. We received a check in December, and then we added our small amount to it, and we were able to purchase new percussion equipment for the Born School High School band. So we worked with Ms. Brown at Born School High School, and then we worked with, I'm sorry, with UCE MC Care's to get the grant. So with our heart and the grant, plus the time that it took to process the application, that was a project of about $1,146. And the second project was a county life project, face masks for the pandemic, and 17 members across the county participated in that. They made 1,300 masks. Those were given to healthcare workers, frontline workers, others in the community who needed masks and that not have them. And using the material cost and the current volunteer hour and rate of just $25 an hour, that project was estimated at $20,000 that the SCE gave to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. I have two exceptional SCE members here with me tonight. I have Myra Fisher, who's our county council president, and then Phyllis McKinney is our 2020 Smith County Best of the Best recipient. Phyllis is very deserving of this award. She's been president of her club and the county council, and she's also written the grant, the UCE MC Care's grant, for the Born School Band, and she's just always willing to help with whatever. And tonight, Myra and I are thrilled to honor Phyllis as Central Region SCE Best of the Best recipient for 2020. Congratulations, Phyllis.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, I think that's all the announcements. Number seven is amendments into the agenda and the approval of the agenda. I do know we need to move a resolution, add a resolution on surplus in the property.
Mayor, I'd like to add two things to the agenda, please.
Okay. Also, I need one more added to that as well. I need to move Resolution 9, 202009, up into probably next, because we only have a 40-minute window on our free Zoom call, and we need to get John Warner over here to talk about it, you know, we're chief, we don't pay for those kind of things, so if you could do those three things.
I'll make a motion to add Resolution 9 to the agenda. I'll make a motion to move Resolution 9 to the front of the agenda, and I'd like to add discussion of who carries that most possible building purchase.
All right. All right, I have that motion.
Second.
Second by Shannon Green. All right, I have a motion, oh, Tommy, it was Tommy, sorry, second by Tommy Banning. All right, I have a motion as second to add these three items to the agenda. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as a meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Don Pascal, second, Shannon Green. I have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Is Mr. John up there, Daisy? Yeah. So, since this, Resolution 9, 09/202009, is a refund of our debt. You do have a, you have had a handout on that, it was brought to full budget finance last week, and Mr. John Warner, our debt manager.
Thomas Stewart.
Thomas Stewart, he's gonna talk about that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Daisy, for having me here this evening. The resolution you have to leave tonight is a refunding and a conversion. A resolution is consistent with Tennessee Code of Independence, Title IX, Chapter 21, Section 3, we're converting, we're proposing to the county of Smith County, three bonds in particular, Series 2015 C, a Roberdell loan, that was a 2009 series, and 2007 USDA loan, which is due back to Landville. And meanwhile, also converting two Tennessee municipal bond fund loans, one of the 2005 loan, and the other one is 2007. What you have in place is the resolution itself, everybody's like the resolution to the previous, and we have other refunding opportunities this county, and we execute with you as your municipal advisor. And it pretty much lays out what you did to refund, why you're refunding the bond funds, the bond form that you'll be using in general. It does give the mayor certain responsibilities to date the sale, should we have questions or need guidance from him on the final restructuring of the bond itself. But also, more importantly, if they should get to the end of this resolution, there's also a refunding report, and that is a requirement that's given to us by the Council of the Office, which basically gives a fine detail to say what the county agreed to do, the amounts of money that's going to involve in doing that, and more importantly, what the actual savings look like, or what the conversion actually looks like. So unless, Daisy, or Mayor, there's any questions about the resolution itself, very, very straightforward, and prepared by your bond counsel, the vast majority of the staff out of Knoxville, and it's pretty straightforward, but unless there's any particular questions, I would like to entertain those before we get into the actual refunding report. Let's go to the refunding report, and Daisy, if you'll show them what that place line picks up.
In the back of your red light.
We have 11 in actual Knoxville report that came to the Council of the Office, and that's just a reminder for the play line. It'll actually go to the plan of refunding itself, again, it goes to a very long, restricted narrative about the actual refunding itself, who the particular players are, what the savings amounts look like, and that sort of thing, making sure that we're not extending the debt any further than it was currently having to be or not. Also, making sure that we're not creating a limited debtness by pushing through this program in the future, and trying to give you some relief on the front end, but I do that as well. If you will go to the front of the page that says on the front of, let me see if I can get this on, I'll share my screen, and since you just say it back. There we go. Can you see that, Daisy? All the commissioners see that as well. This is the actual refunding report that we presented to Daisy and the mayor a few weeks ago, when we were thinking that you, well, first of all, we back up with that, we were on a rating call with S and P recently, and because the type of time they like to check on the credits that are outstanding, that have been previously rated by S and P, and I want, I said this to the budget, and I want to say this to everyone in the county commission, your mayor and Daisy did an excellent job in preparing themselves for that, getting the necessary information to the rating company well in advance, so they all have a chance to digest a whole lot of information about Smith County, Tennessee. And then when we actually had the rating call, they put a lot of depth and color to the current and actual situation that the county had then, and then where the county is now, and where they see the county going going forward. And I was, I was extremely pleased, and quite frankly, I think the analysts from S and P was a little bit overwhelmed with the presentation itself, so you have, you have a great team on the executive side of things, as far as getting things in order, and also I want to congratulate the county commission as well, taking all the responsibility to actually chip up with a kind of tough call. You should all be proud of the work that you've done to get where you are right now. So during that call, I mentioned to the analysts that I wanted to, the breaks have been very, very favorable for a lot of our counties that have showed across the states and the state, and it's a very good possibility that I need to show to the county what have a refunding opportunity they have, which presented just what we had for. which presented just what we had for, what you're seeing now is the presentation that we actually used, uh, 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 several weeks ago. And if you look at it, basically on Page One, that is what the refunding is going to look like once the bond issue has been sold. You'll have two semi-annual payments and one annual payment, uh, for, on the debt service, which is from an administrative side point, standpoint, makes it much easier to, uh, work with within, you know, the county and resources you got to pay for. Something as simple as paying bills as opposed to paying once a week, or once a month, or twelve times a month, or twelve times a year, once a year for principal. It's just, it just kind of consolidates everything into one nice, uh, loan package. And you can see, if you look in the third column here, this is what is the cost of money looks like in the current market environment. I want to emphasize that we will not know what the actual price is going to be until we sell bond. Now, our firm, for those who may not remember, we sell more issues in the state of Tennessee than any other firm in the state. Uh, we've been doing this for almost ninety years. And, um, quite frankly, we've got a good grasp of what the current market looks like for both our large and our smaller clients as well. And you can see that the market right now, uh, money for, that's, that's due next year is one half of one percent, which is just unbelievable. And if you look at, gradually goes up each year as time goes further out. And then in the last year, it's the tier year, which will propose to be June One, twenty forty. The interest rate is two point two five percent. Now, these rates are going to be locked in on the day of the sale. They may be a little higher, they may be a little bit lower, but they'll be very close. As you feel very confident, it's going to be very close in the future. And we think we're estimating that the overall cost of money from top to bottom is going to be about, looking at these two interest costs. We are estimating the two interest costs of the county's debt through June One of twenty forty to be approximately one point five three percent. And you'll see how that translates into the savings that we're, that we're projecting and anticipate, or not anticipate, but estimate for the county. Uh, so if we go to, oh, on Page Three, that is a breakdown of the cost. And we allocated the cost across all the debt issues, uh, for the bonds and notes and the loans that they put into place so that if there's ever a question on what is particular debt issue and cost, we allocate those costs. And you will see particularly some of the bond down loans that, uh, even with a relatively small inside, allocate more cost, and allocating cost to more issues because many of these costs are fixed and spread out. Makes the bond issue itself a little bit more attractive to the buyer, it executes better, and you'll find it will get better, uh, pricing top to bottom and across the board as far as the, where actually bond sales occur. Uh, there's an actual breakdown, which was already in the original cover letter of the state for the cost of issuance. One item that did put in the cover letter, which I think was incorrect, they referred to the, uh, underwriters' accounts at something like a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's an underwriter's discount. And that under, their underwriter discount is taken into consideration when you look at the previous pages on the cost of money itself. This is what, and, uh, uh, again, when we were doing some of these, this is what some outstanding debt looks like right now. The red line represents the current debt, all the supporting debt underneath it prior to the refunding. And then we talk about the actual refunding itself. So on Page Six, this is the one that really kind of got everybody's attention, uh, in the mayor's office and positively received, and the discussions and the, uh, budget committee.
Starting twenty twenty-one, overall savings, uh, for the county, we're estimating something like two thousand dollars. We'll have savings in the future, all the way to twenty twenty-two thousand dollars. And we'll have a slight stretch of time where we might actually pay a little bit more than what you pay right now. And just making consideration that consideration is up now, if I just do this far.
Savings more much, so that number may have to change going after the finish group. But to figure savings, you'll see that particularly here at this timeline, it's starting in twenty forty-one through twenty forty-six. You're saving in most of those years over a hundred thousand dollars a year. And that's because we have shortened up, we've been able to take advantage of these favorable rates. We've been able to shorten up some of that very long, expensive, uh, debt service that you're paying right now for the landfill. We've been able to shorten that up considerably. We'll show that in a little bit more detail. But the gross savings that we're estimating for this bond issue is one thousand one hundred sixty-one thousand fifty-five dollars. Now, because a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow over five years or ten years now. If you were to just kind of haul that money back and make a dollar tomorrow, what if we want today? That number comes up to nine hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars. And that number as a percentage of this number up here, the total bond issue itself, is a savings of about less than the net present value savings of eleven percent. Now, generally speaking, when I'm talking to my clients about a savings opportunity, any number north of three percent is a number that you want to take advantage of that savings opportunity. And in this particular case, we're almost talking about a factor of four times that number. So it's really, really a good number and a good savings opportunity for the county. And again, these numbers, once the bonds are sold, those bonds are, those, those rates are locked in through the duration of the debt itself. It can never, ever change. The next few pages, uh, talks about the savings on each one of the pieces of debt that we will refund. These first two pages are for the Series Two Thousand Fifteen C Bonds, which is what was used many years ago for the four house. And for the, uh, uh, oh, shoot, I'm, I'm drawing a blank here. I want, I want to say maybe the Justice Center, maybe something like that. And then a loan that you took out in Two Thousand Nine from the Ruined Up for some fire trucks. Okay? And then we go to the piece of the loan that we're actually going to be converting out of the general fund for variable fits. Now, let me kind of back up here a little bit. For years, variable rate debt was an extraordinary risk you had to take because you took it back in Two Thousand Five, Two Thousand Nine. It actually paid off for them in the long haul because of all that was going on with the financial crisis during that time. Since that time, markets have gotten much better and the county's paid significantly more from their debt, for their debt, the variable rate debt in today's market than they did way back when they had the financial crisis. What's interesting now is at one point, while the variable rate debt is going up, the fixed rates were going down. And that's because of all of the financial contagions that's been going on over the years. And people who were trying to invest their money were trying to find some place to get any kind of yield whatsoever, some kind of positive return. And they invested in, of all things, Tennessee Municipal Pay, Smith County Tennessee. So as these two were coming together, you're actually, sometimes they were, long-term fixed rates were actually cheaper than long-term variable rates or short-term variable rates. But now the market has changed and the variable rates are going back down, but so do the fixed rates continue to go. So even with today's market, even as low as the variable rate market is, when you take the fees that you're having to pay for your remarketing, for your liquidity, for, uh, the fee that you pay each month, the bond fund, or the outstanding balance, you're paying just on those three things alone about one point six percent. Well, if you look at this conversion, and again, this does, these, like, the T M F loans, those rates we reset once a week. And Daisy did a report once a week that showed what those rates are. These rates are going to be the same forever from the date of sale. To make this conversion, we're looking at a cost of money of about one point two one percent for the Two Thousand Five. Okay? So actually, it's actually a little bit less long-term fixed rates than what current variable rates are. And the same thing with the five, the Two Thousand Seven Loan, one point two one percent. Now, the reason why I don't want to talk about these savings is because I don't know what a savings is going to be because I'm dealing with variable rate versus a long-term fixed rate. But I can tell you right now that the variable pieces of rate is almost at eight percent right now. Or excuse me, eight tenths of one percent. Your fees that you're paying right now are right at one point five oh percent. So even if the rate's way down to zero, you would still be paying more for this variable rate debt with the risk of the rate going back up than you would be paying estimated long-term one point two one percent. That's why I would suggest in making this conversion, because not only are you locking in long-term fixed rates, if the county wants to go out to the marketplace and borrow some more money for road projects, for example. Rating agencies highly favor municipalities, uh, and local governments that don't carry any variable rate debt. It's a very dangerous thing to have. It's one where you have to, for more, of a sophisticated, uh, large county with lots of cash to be able to offset some of the interest rate of this. And for someone who's trying to work so hard to right your ship like Smith County is, making that conversion now for variable to fix really, really makes sense right now. And unfortunately, the market allows us to do that. Then on Page Twelve, uh, this is the solid waste fund. This is the landfill. And you can see, uh, that the rates are significantly lower than what you're paying right now with the landfill. But also because of the rate difference is so much better, we're actually able to shorten the debt service some six years, seven years, and move the principal payments back into the current debt service. And try to, it helps you save some money. And that's what you're saying in this particular case, just making this, this one piece of the conversion itself over six hundred, almost six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Okay? Uh, with a net present value of four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars alone. And the good news is that we're able to take advantage of the general obligation, uh, debt provision of this bond issue and get those variable rates over to the, uh, over to the, uh, landfill. Even though we know the landfill generates its own revenues to pay for the debt service. That's just going to help the landfill spend less money on debt service and hopefully be able to create a stronger bond balance for themselves to say, work their way through this particular project. And there's the graph that kind of talks about the savings you have there. And you have no debt out here because it's sorted up seven years. And then the last two pages of it are just the conversion, or just the conversion of all the fixed rates right now that you have. The current debt you have, paying it off when we plan to close on this, and we hope to be able to close on this somewhere later in December. We'll sell bonds in, uh, mid to late November and then push for a close, close to, um, close to, just close to Christmas. And that'd be a good way to give the citizens of, of Smith County a nice little Christmas present, if you will, of a million-dollar savings estimated. And that's pretty much all of it. Uh, the rest of this are just various forms that have been previously sent to the state. Uh, when we did the debt service, that's something we do, it's a normal thing to do, nothing to do that for, with the parents concerned. Uh, I know I've taken a lot of my time to go over this, but are there any questions with Mayor or Daisy that the commissioners may have at this time? I'd be glad to entertain.
Is there any questions or discussions? John, before we turn him loose?
Any questions?
Everybody understanding what we're talking about?
All right. John, we thank you for excellent job of explaining that. And, uh, thank you for the kind words earlier. And, uh, thank you for, uh, watching out for Smith County and helping us with this. He's done. All right. So if you have that resolution before you to enter into this and refund this debt, need to save some of that money and buy some batteries to be.
So we'll go. Finally, is there any, any, uh, so we had no questions, but, uh, looks good. Saving one point two million dollars, shortening our debt, and, uh, making our cash flow that much better on the debt service side. At this time, if there's no, I would take a motion to approve this resolution.
So we.
Motion by Joey Neeson?
Second.
Second. Shannon Green makes the motion as second. I have a motion as second to approve Resolution Zero Nine, 2020-09. Is there any questions or discussions? If this contains money, Stacy will do a roll call.
Clay and Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Shannon Green?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Don Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Erica Eagle?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Peggy Stowe?
Yes.
Phil Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Joey Neeson?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Tim Beller?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Andy, your next. Thank you all. All right, one thing I'm, skip right over on the announcement before we go on to the county mayor report. You do have a copy of Mr. Roger Duke's letter of resignation. I hated to take that because you have become a really good commissioner and has been a great friend and asset during this whole pandemic thing. But, uh, his company took a consulting job where he couldn't hold a government position. So in order to pay the bills, he has had to resign his, uh, commission position. So we will, uh, work on getting, uh, an ad out there. Uh, we, this was past the deadline to put it on the ballot for November. So we will have to, uh, appoint this one in October, November, whichever one we can get it done. So just wanted you to know that.
Can Wade send him a thank you or a plaque or something for all he did for the pandemic? I think he at least deserves that.
This man, we'll work on getting that done for sure.
Thank you.
Be glad to get that done. This man, he's been a, he's been a good guy for that, for us, that, and a good commissioner. And he did say he was still going to help me on that, and the service looking at some stuff out there. So that's the kind of fellow he is. So, all right, we'll move on to, is there any old business? If not, we'll move on to Number Nine, the county mayor report. All right. Uh, I was going to have a big, long, drawn-out state of the state since it's our halfway of our first term. But I'll, I'll make a quick brief since we've got so much business we've got to do tonight. We've had all this stuff moving in and moving up on the agenda. But basically, uh, we sat down with Eugene and Jeremy a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, those guys have, we had a maintenance man leave, so we're down. And uh, those guys have, we had a maintenance man leave, so we're down, down labor side. And I don't know if any of you have tried to hire anybody lately, but it's not the easiest world to hire people at this point in time. But uh, Eugene and I, and we worked out, they took over four spots of our mowing. And they are going to start handling the roadside repairs on our nine one one roadside. So we uh, we greatly appreciate that. Uh, we talked about there's some projects they're going to help, help us with during cold weather when there's not much mowing. So I thank Eugene and Jeremy for, for being agreeable and helping us, helping us do that. How you're on record, sir. So we appreciate that. Uh, another thank you to Jeff Crockett, Terry Givens. They uh, we had some drainage issues at Station One. Those guys went and rented a track hoe and uh, Jeff Crockett brought his tractor in and they did the work and fixed that drainage issue and saved us right around twenty-five hundred dollars is what we estimate. So we, we appreciate that very much. So uh, it's, I've always said, and I still believe it, there's things governments needs to do and do. And there's things they don't need to be involved in. And uh, whatever we want to do, we want to do it well and do it the most efficient way possible and be a, a, a good steward of, of the county's money. Uh, update on the governor's money. Tanker delivery is expected the end of October, early November. One of the side boom bush hog tractors is here and being used. Uh, the other should be here shortly. Uh, the asphalt distributor has been purchased and is expected to be here somewhere in the November, December timeframe. There's about eighty-three thousand dollars left in that money and that's to be determined how it will be broken out. Uh, Baker property, industrial property. Uh, tonight you will have a resolution to decline that property surplus. The reason we are declaring that surplus is, is that's the, the, when a county owns property, it's just like owning a typewriter, a, a laptop, you have to declare surplus before you can sell it. And then you would have to bid it. The reason we are doing this tonight is, is we are currently working with an industrial client that is looking to bring at least two different manufacturing businesses to that land. And once they get that done, their next project is, would be to finish out developing that, the rest of that for industrial. Uh, we expect to have a letter of their interest this week on that. And we will put a bid out for that property at that point in time and hopefully have something done. And by the next October, have you a proposal put forth for that, that's the sale of that property. So that would be a great thing because we're selling that property, getting it off our ballot sheet, our debt sheet. And it's also bringing two businesses to the county. And uh, pretty impressive people that I've talked to in that, that are excited about Tennessee and moving here. And we've talked about some other things that, that could, could possibly come aboard down the road and, and. Again, nothing's, nothing's done, nothing's there, but uh, the, the talks right now are really good. We did receive the certified rural community designation from T V A. I want to thank Dan, come in Tennessee Central for being a big part in getting that done. We had a uh, Zoom presentation and that's, that was, that was interesting, but it went, went really well. And uh, we got to, uh, got, got that done. Quick update, Daisy will update this further, but we are two-thirds of the way to our three million dollar goal in funding cash balances every year. We're not, as we stated before, we will not be borrowing a tax anticipation note. Uh, if this, if the economy continues to motor on like it is, we should hit that goal in year two instead of three. And with that, we will, there will be money that we can, A, give back to the taxpayers, B, put to roads, or C, a combination of both, which I think is probably the best bet. But we'll see where we're at for that. Our, our roads are deteriorating every day and Steve and his crew work miracles and squeezing every dollar they can to keep them in a decent shape. So we're going to have to spend some money on our roads. So that may be, you know, that's part of that. And John talked about that, there was, there's a possibility of maybe a bond issue on that that we use there. So that's uh, uh, we hope to be able to move that money there. And, and, and my goal would be a combination of both in next year's budget. Yes, I said it out loud, but if you don't say it out loud in the goal, it's just, it's just a nice thought. So a goal is not, is something I want, I, I write that down and I put that on my desk every day. Uh, tomorrow or Wednesday, tomorrow or Wednesday, this is not holiday week. Tomorrow, Wednesday, questionnaires for our employees will go out for them to start filling out for our pay study. This is the first step in the process to see where we are uh, as a county when it comes to employee pay and benefits compared to like governments and private businesses. This should be complete by the third quarter of the fiscal year or our first quarter for twenty twenty-one. We are at eighty-one active cases today of the coronavirus, or point four percent of the population is an active case. I still believe people, not the government, make the best decisions on what they do to protect themselves from this virus. I stand by my decision not to enforce a mandate on a rural, non-heavily populated county. I receive calls weekly asking me to make businesses require masks. And I state every time, that is their choice, is their business. If you, and you get the choice of, of using that business if you don't like how they operate. I believe you should always err on the side of freedom of delivery. This virus is real and has been attributed to ten deaths and some very sick individuals in our county. But we have tried to remain a calming voice and not increase fear apparently by leaving your decisions up to you. Are there any questions? If not, I will move on to Ms. Daisy and her financial report.
Uh, you all have cash flows for, they're updated through August thirty-first in your packet. And of course, the financial reports are a little later on in the agenda. Those financial reports are for the year ending, so they'll be as of June thirtieth. Um, does anybody have any questions about cash flow? I know when we were estimating for the year, we uh, had anticipated ending at approximately one point nine in cash. And you'll notice we started the year with two point two. So we were ahead of what we predicted to be.
No questions for Daisy? All right, we'll move on. Uh, and Steve Kogle, me and Steve Kogle have wanted Mickey to give an update tonight. But I told me, I said, we don't have a spot in there for you. Tonight's not about what y'all bought, it's about, you know, seeing where Steve is and what, you know, his, his attitude, his weight going forward. And we would work on, and he would give you a full report in October. So, but again, we're glad that uh, Ms. Norma was here to talk to us about that. All right, we'll move on to number ten is committee reports. You have a list of all those minutes. Are there any questions or concerns out of those? If not, we will move on to new business. Uh, letter A is appointments. Tonight is the beginning of our new legislative year, so we will elect a new board of, a new chairman pro team. And your committee will be approved tonight. Uh, item number one is the chairman of board of commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, uh, Mr. Jimmy Winfrey nominates Jeff Lysin, Shannon Green seconds. Any other nominations? Shannon.
I have a motion to cease nominations by acclamation.
Second. Uh, I have a motion and a second to nomination to cease and Dalton. Right, was it Tom? No, it was Dalton. Tom, okay. I have a motion and a second to for nominations to cease and be elected by acclamation. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank, thank you all for electing me once again. I appreciate the trust you put into me to run this meeting. Again, that's all I do is run the meeting. I run the meeting and you guys are the legislative body. I just, we put together that stuff, you guys make the decision. And I appreciate everyone of you for what you do. So, all right, item number two is the chairman pro team of board of commissioners. I will take a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion of Mr. Joey Neeson.
I say.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Tommy Bain, a second by Linda Nixon, Joey Neeson. Any other nominations?
Motion nomination please.
Second. Second by Tommy Bain. All right, I have a motion and a second, the nomination to cease and Joey Neeson be elected chairman pro team by acclamation. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item number three is, is a new slate for the Smith County Public Library Local Regional Board members. There is a list of those on page twenty-three and twenty-four. Take a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
To approve that. Shannon, Dalton. Motion to approve that list. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Linda Nixon. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the list of library board members. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They are nominated, they are appointed. All right, item number four is the officer to wait on criminal charges. That would be Mr. Steve Hopper. All right, I will take a motion to approve him as the officer of wait on criminal charges. Motion to approve Ron Schumay, second by Frank Woodard. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Smith County Agriculture Committee. This is, this is a nomination of new county commissioners onto that committee. You have it on page twenty-six. I believe it is Dennis Hackett. Taking, and Mr. Jimmy Winfrey's rolling off, is that correct? And Dalton Pascal's being put on, is that right? Do what? No, Eddie Stowe, I'm sorry, Eddie was, Eddie and Dalton, Dennis stays on Dalton and Eddie roll on. And Mr. Jimmy rolls off. I take a motion to approve that Smith County Agriculture Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Tommy Bain.
Second.
Second, Dennis Hackett, motion and a second. All right, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number six is the Smith County Region Planning Commission. This is appointing Missy Manning to a new attorney on that. Motion to approve.
So we.
Nancy, second.
Second.
Shannon Green? He shook his head. So I didn't just make that up yet. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve that. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, item number seven is the letter of recommendation for Mr. Jeremy Hassler to as a new county attorney. I have had the pleasure to work with Jeremy over the past three or four weeks. And uh, we've thrown some wild scenarios, Eddie makes just business as normal, but he's handling it like a champ. And uh, he's done a good job, works hard, and he cares about his county when we prepare. So again, that is my recommendation as a new county attorney.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, he's second. Second Linda Nixon. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve Jeremy Hassler as new county attorney. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You can't say anything. Congratulations, thank you, welcome forward, sir. All right, item B is the approvals. You have this county finance department year-end financial reports. So you have those before you, is there any questions for Daisy on those? If not, I take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Tommy Bain.
Second.
Second Dennis Hackett. I have a motion and a second, any questions or discussions on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is the school director's year-end financial reports. Ms. Norma is here, if you have any questions on that? If not, I would take a motion to approve.
So we.
Motion to approve Jimmy Winfrey.
A second.
Second Tommy Bain. I have a motion and a second to approve the school director's year-end financial reports. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. Item number three is a new committee list for Smith County county commissioners. Uh, item number three, I will take a motion to approve that list.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Tommy Bain.
Second.
Second Shannon Michie, I have a motion and a second to approve that. Any questions or discussion?
I'll be added to the roll committee.
Do what?
I'll be added to the roll committee.
Two vacant spots.
Yeah. Well, as you, after, we'll make that correction after nine.
How come some of the committees have blank spots?
That's for the ones we don't have seated right now to move to slide in there.
I see.
We had, I was going to work all of you today, so I had to leave some spots for other people when they come in, when we get them appointed or they get elected. So they can be a part of it as well. It seems like it's been this way for two years. We've never had a full committee, somebody was, we were either in limbo or by the time we get one approved, it'd be somebody else happy to resign or retire, so. Do we have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number four is the receiver bonds and circuit court clerk, deputy clerk Celia Blair. I will take a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion to approve Dennis Hackett. Second Frank Woodard. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. All right, item number C, moving on to our resolutions. The first three are budget amendments. They, all three come with positive recommendations for the budget, from budget finance department. Uh, they are moving money inside their budgets. We can vote on them separate or we can group them, it's, it's the will of the body.
I think most of the group approve all of them.
Motion to group and approve, and a second by Tommy Bain. I have a motion and a, uh, second to group items, resolution zero nine twenty oh one, oh two, and oh three. Are there any questions or discussions on that motion? Yes, Tommy. If not, we'll do a roll call, Stacy.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Shannon Green?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Eddie Stowe?
Yes.
Phil Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Joey Neeson?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Tim Beller?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
All right, motions, one, two, and three, passion out, thank you. All right, item number four is a resolution for us to use Sourcewell for county purchasing. This is the old, where's it, N A, J P? N J P A? Yeah, we did. Oh, was that just a group? No, okay, sorry. All right, yeah, you're right, sorry. You were correct. All right, now we have to approve those resolutions. Do what? His motion was to group and approve, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, so that is the, thank you. All right, item number four is the Sourcewell for county purchasing. It is the old national purchasing where you, it's, you, you can buy off of that list without having to be. You you can buy off of that list without having to bid because they've already bid for those services and you pick from that supplier, so. It's the one that we would use to buy the side boom tractors. I would take a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Shannon Green with a motion to approve.
Second.
Second Terry Givens. I have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? It doesn't have to be a roll call, all right, is all those in favor? Opposed? We already did resolution five. All right, we'll move on to letter F is a low, is a list of notaries under your approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Dennis Hackett.
Second.
No, we didn't, we, that's right, we have, I'm sorry, we do have one more resolution. That is the, that is surplusing the bakery property. That is resolution zero-nine-twenty-ten, and again, what this does is it just allows that per, that property to be sold. It doesn't mean we're selling it, it just means it gives us the opportunity, just like you would a a laptop or, I'm sorry, thank you. I would take a motion to approve. Motion to approve Shannon Green. Second Eddie Stowe. I have a motion and a second to add that surplus. Any questions or discussions? We'll just take a motion to approve. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we move on to notaries. Item B, if you have a list of notaries before you, believe I had a motion to approve Dennis Hackett and a second. Is that Frank, did you take that? I have a motion and a second to approve notaries. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number twelve, other business. This is where we moved, added that CARES Act money and possible building discussion. This was brought up. A couple of weeks ago when we, we received our allotment for CARES Act money through the federal government and Smith County was allotted just shy of three hundred thousand dollars.
Two ninety-nine, one third.
Two ninety-nine, one third. So. We spent a day or two trying to think how we were gonna spend it.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement, it's reimbursement, my mistake, yeah, it's reimbursement of money that you have spent or money that you're gonna spend. Well, we got to looking and we had not spent a ton of money. I mean, we bought placey glass and hand sanitizer and cleaning stations and stuff like that and we kicked around some ideas going forward. And then we had the idea of the old, what I call Green Bank building out on the far end of town on Main Street. And we had the idea that we could mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen by implementing, it has three drive-through windows. It has an open air lobby that you could spread out and social distance. And we just, we, we kinda threw a Hail Mary and thought, well, let's just ask and see if it can be done. We called the folks that are working the horn group and they said, good question, don't know, they, they started running up the chain. And came back to us and said, well, can you, can you write a narrative as to why you think that would be something and how that would help you mitigate the spread? So Daisy and I kinda sat down and crafted out a, basically a two-page narrative as to how we felt like we could use that building to, for the, the drive-throughs to limit people coming into buildings, how we can spread out at the lobby. Move that, due, I mean, because we, we got tax season's coming. It's always busy in Cliff's office and then early voting starts somewhere October, so that building's gonna be pretty crowded. And as you all know, that's an elementary school, it's one way in, one way out, and it's gonna be kinda hard to keep people from being close together in that building. So we wrote that, sent it, didn't have, didn't, I didn't think, didn't really have a great feeling, but thought it's worth a shot. Well, this morning Daisy got an email saying, hey, you're seventy-five percent approved, just make sure you can be moved in it by the end of the year. So we, we got the guy and looked at the building today and we think we can get that done. If they'll take, you know, if, if we can get it done with Fremont, that's kind of, you know, we, we've got two hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred thirty in that and then about eighty-three thousand leftover governor's money, so. I don't wanna use all that because there will be some cost as far as moving servers and such as that and, but that's just something that, that we threw out and kind of out of the box, kind of thinking and. It took them aback and they had to spend a few days. I think it went all the way to Washington to get the, to get some type of approval on that because it is a theme of money and we didn't wanna do something and, and take the, take the word of somebody in a cubicle versus, and then must be stuck with that. So we say all that to say, we're here tonight to discuss it. If, if you guys as a body think that's a dumb idea and don't need to do it, no, we've not hurt, you know, it won't hurt my feelings, it's a, like I said, it was, we, we rolled the dice and they said yes, so. We're willing to roll the dice one more time, see if they'll take, take an offer of about three hundred thousand dollars. Don't mean they will, don't mean they won't, but we're, we're willing to try it one time and just to be able to, to spread out and, and get a new building and mitigate the spread. Oh yeah, yeah, well, one thing with the Turner building, as you all know, it's. I think my office is where I went to first grade and I'm, that's been thirty years ago at least, no, longer than that. I'm in high school thirty years. Yeah, so I don't, I don't know, it should've been the fifties probably, anybody remember how, when that building was built, fifties? Old building. Uh, I did have, when Rackley did their roof inspections, they, they came and looked at it and as it sits today, in about three years, we're gonna have to put a hundred pieces out and got a roof on it. We have done our preliminary evaluations on ADA and you can guess with an old building, that's gonna cost a lot of money. So. There's gonna be some money that has to be spent there anyways. Yeah, 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 we put, we patched your vein a couple of times, trying to keep somebody, you know, of course, the air conditioning units, every, there's, I think there's one separate one for every office just about. As Albert mentioned the other day, now you remember, we had heater trouble when cold weather stopped, so they got that going, yes ma'am.
What about the, the building that we're thinking about, how old is it and?
It was built.
What about the heating and air systems and then how old are they and what would be?
Right, well, what we would do is, is if we, we would make this, we would make an offer contingent upon someone doing a building inspection and coming back and telling us saying, okay, yeah, this roof is good, you've got another X and these heating and air units are good, that'll last for, you know, we're, we're not gonna go buy some, buy another problem. You know, I, I, we'll spend the money, whatever that costs, get that inspection done for us, but just for the peace of mind. Uh, there'll be, but, but we actually went and looked at it today with the Realtor and it's not in bad shape at all, I mean, it needs probably some paint here and there and some touch-ups, but.
Too many offices can figure out into it.
We may have to start trying to find tenants and something, we, we'll, we'll be able to move everybody out of the Turner building and we'll have more storage than we've ever had in our lives. Inside the county, yes sir.
Could we look at the merchant other offices?
Yes, 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 and I mean. Yes, that was a, that was the one, is US, you know, USDA crop services and egg extension, they all, we pay rent for egg, for four-H, we could try to get the lease for the USDA and move them out there as well. And that would be money back to us.
For rent then?
Right.
What, what do we pay for the rent for that?
It's about eleven thousand dollars a year for the, uh, four-H or egg extension. They went up on us, right when I came into office, they raised their rates.
Would there be a, like a public backlash about it, given the fact that we just had such a big property increase last year?
Right. Yes ma'am, that's.
Would that be a problem?
That would be a problem, the only, the only thing that we could come back to is, is this would be money that we, that doesn't come out of the general fund if we can get into that with this COVID money.
Getting that across to the public, that they're, they're gonna understand that.
Right.
They're gonna say that we jack property taxes at fifty-nine cents next year and I'll be living in a big brand of bill.
Absolutely. You ain't done, you ain't thought that, I mean, I've, I've kicked this. Yeah, I mean, it would just, yeah, it would be an education experience to get that done. Well, I said, you know, it's. It would have three drive-through windows and an open air lobby is that, and then like I said, it would. If it, if it pass inspection is in better shape than the Turner building, it would save us a lot of maintenance down the road.
If that went through, we'd be willing to, or be able to sell the Turner building?
Yes, and we could recoup some of that cost.
That money go back into the?
Yes.
General fund?
Yes, yes.
So we're looking at continuously four million dollars we gotta put into that building to save the Turner. That's not an number on me.
ADA is not going to be optional.
Yeah, that's.
We're finally gonna make me do that. I've tried to push that just off as every chance I give, but yeah, that's kinda. And again, it's one of those where, you know, if, if we can't buy it with our, for lack of a better term, the money that's been, that's given to us on, on those reimbursements and, and the governor's grant, then we don't need to do it. That's. It's not the right, I, it's not the right time to do it because I don't, I, I don't wanna put taxpayer money into it. Because we are working to get out of that and we've said, we don't, we don't, we couldn't buy any nice things, that's, I still stand by that, but if we can get it for this, this money, then I, I think we can make it work.
You're trying to sell an old Turner building or?
Yes, we would, we would sell it if we could, yes.
That'd be the problem, that might be a problem.
It could be.
With all the, you were saying that names.
All right, the Turner building in France?
Turner building in France?
Yes.
This, would it be justified if we could have it appraised and find out the price of the building and it made just by selling the old Turner building for that?
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, we talked about that today was getting that appraisal, you know, getting a, a value of that property. The appraisal, the tax card appraisal on the, on the bank building today was one point two million dollars, one point four, you're right, one point four million dollars.
Is there enough adequate parking for just new facility?
There's forty spots at the bottom of the hill for employees and I think forty all around the building and it has handicap accessible parking, the ramps are already there. So yes, parking is, parking is clean. Right.
Would there ever office be booming this new building?
If we got some poor folks to come in with, it's probably. Yeah, if we could get like some of these here that are paying rent or we're paying rent for, move them there. Chris, would you be willing to move to a bigger spot?
Absolutely.
It's, that's a lot of money for that little cracker box, but office you got.
The ones on each end of the hill are giving much more than that.
Yes.
So we're paying for it?
No, we're not paying, they're paying the.
The little government is renting this from the owners of the building.
So we could possibly turn that in.
For what is worth, mayor, I'm sorry, we're not only, we're not only expanding out to middle Tennessee and county, pay his rent, rent and provide his space.
Okay. Any other question, discussion?
I think Chris. The offices on each end, Chair Willmore and Soul Rock Village would have to move the tech, that's what we've been talking to Chris. Uh, we couldn't get one.
Yeah.
They'd have to be in the same building.
We would need to see what their contracts are and how good they can get out of it. If they would be willing to do that.
I hear what you want, motion?
Give me a motion to, to just hand in and see where we get started.
Make a motion that we offer, make an offer three hundred thousand dollars for building, engine, test or whatever.
That's better. I have a motion and a second. Dawson. Any, any other questions or discussion?
It's, um, clear that three hundred thousand dollars would be the CARES Act money, it's not tax money.
Yes, it is, we would, we would write the check and they would reimburse us for it.
Like a maniac's plea, but I'm not sure if that's clear.
Yes, yes. If we can't get it bought, we'll move on and do something different. Things are better. All right, any other questions or discussion? Ready to roll call on this one, please.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Shannon Green?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Don Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Erica Eagle?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Eddie Stowe? Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Joey Nixon? Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Tim Keller?
Yes.
Frank Wood?
Yeah.
All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, so. If they, if they come back and say yes, I would need your approval to sign that offer and be done.
We would also need somebody's minutes of free.
Correct, so we, what I would propose tonight is we recess for that reason and not adjourn, that way we can come back in a week if we have to.
We could recess, maybe we can recess until unspecified by time, or rather we recess until certain.
It would be, we recessed a specific time and that would give us a good deadline, knowing second back seller, so.
I guess I'll worry that inspection is part of that too.
Yeah.
You got a.
We try to get inspection done ASAP.
That's, that's fine.
And if they come back and say no, then we don't need to do that anyways.
Is it, this might be a question for our attorney, is it acceptable to recess at, to a time to be determined based on what the first step is?
With the notice issued there, maybe with your information. He just didn't turn it on now. Other talks would like to be settled. You can set a specific time and come back.
You don't have to ask me to turn it on. At least give them a table.
Yeah. You said for a week from today?
A week or two weeks?
Two weeks? You do a week recess. That worked for you?
I think we'll recess for two weeks from now, seven PM here.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second Shannon Green, I have a motion and a second to recess tonight for two weeks. All those in favor? Opposed? Two weeks. If something moves quicker, could we move that up with proper notice?
No, you wouldn't have to have a notice.
Well.